Mr. Kristel?
President.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Present.
Mr. Tackett?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We need a motion to adopt the agenda. Ms. Remington? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none?
Mr. Kristel?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
All right. We've got minutes. Oh, we're doing that first? All right. Item two is hearing of the public on agenda items. Anybody? They're both applying. Was that? They're both applying. Okay. Then we'll move to minutes. Minutes from the August eighth meeting. We need a motion. Some.
Second.
Ms. Powers-Dolme. Any corrections or questions? Hearing none? Ms. Nick, if you call the roll.
Mr. Kristel?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Meeting minutes from the special meeting held on August twenty-fifth. The motion. Some room. Mr. Kristel?
Second.
Mr. Powers. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none? If you call the roll, please.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Upstee.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Kristel?
Yes.
And from sure. From the work session on August twenty-fifth. Some room.
Second.
Any questions or comments? It's Mr. Kristel in this room. Hearing none? If you call the roll, please.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Upstee.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Kristel?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
All right. Presentations.
I think they're waiting for
Okay.
Show up. His her father is outside.
Okay. We'll come back. New business. We have our next regular meeting on October tenth here in the James Dillon Boardroom. I would also note, and it's not on the agenda, but we have a Red Breaker Roundtable coming up.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Heritage Middle School.
Thank you. Do we have board members to attend?
I don't believe so.
Is there anyone who would like to attend that meeting?
I will attend.
Mrs. Powers-Dolme.
I'm unable to.
That's something that night also.
Yes, do I?
Well, then I guess it's me. So if I don't.
It's also conferences that night, too.
And conferences at Heritage that night.
That's earlier in the month than we normally do.
It is. It's a
The second.
It's the third.
It is the third, actually.
Because this month started on a Thursday. Makes it a little goofy, but
What time?
We do. We do have conferences. Yes.
At seven? I can I can make it at seven. I have something from four to six at the college.
Okay.
So if you if it's a hardship for you, I'll be happy to come and and to hurt with.
Well, thank you. So we'll have Ms. Powers-Dolme and Ms. Remington.
And I knew so much because I got a message.
I did also.
Right before I walked in here, so.
Well, mine was this morning, I think, or last night, I want to. Okay. Legislative report, which I actually have this week. Or month or whatever. Now, there's the legislature has come back into session. Of course, they've decided to legislate educational issues. There are three new bills that have been introduced. House Bill five ninety-four was introduced on September sixth and addressed how funds recovered from community schools after audit, if any, will be distributed. Essentially, depending on the type of audit that was conducted by the state, the funds will either be returned to the school districts from which they were deducted or where students were entitled to attend. This is, you know, just was introduced last week and and hasn't even been assigned to a committee yet. Then there's Senate Bill three fifty-two, which was introduced on September seventh and requires that school zones on the roadways be marked with signage that in one way or another will indicate when the school zones are active. I know that may seem like a really obvious one, but I know even here for a while, at Maple, we would have the sign that said school zone, but it didn't have lights and it didn't have any times as to when the school zone was active. I know there's still some human conqueror manner and some of those, and most of them are going to death, so this could be valuable for some areas where there's still that kind of signage, but it doesn't seem like it would have any impact on us because I think all of our zones now are marked with lighted signs. I think. Mr. House is not here, maybe. I don't know. Are we even responsible for those signs? I would assume we are, but it's not the city. Yeah. Okay. Well, anyways, not this bill isn't really a shattering, so.
Turn the signs on and off. That will be a signal service, so. Signage is usually put up by the local government or by the road department.
Okay.
Came in, it's a state route.
Learned something new.
Took down a state route.
All right. Well, we're transportation.
Speaking of of school signage in buses, there was just something on the news this afternoon. I don't remember the school district, but they not only had signs inside the bus, they had signs outside the bus. And they had caught several drivers that even though the arm was was sticking out saying stop, people were driving around it. And there was a fifty dollar fine, and I think they had caught six drivers somewhere. But not too many districts have cameras outside the bus also.
Cameras, they cameras outside and then a sign, okay.
Cameras, cameras.
Okay. Well, the third one you've probably heard about because it was on the news the end of last week. Apparently it's become such a problem for all the people in the state. There's been an uprising that the Senate decided it was necessary to legislate when we can and cannot start school. They passed or they introduced a new bill on August sixteenth, Senate Bill three forty-six, to say that schools shall not start before Labor Day unless boards hold a hearing at least thirty days in advance to exempt to thirty days in advance of passing a resolution to start prior to Labor Day, or there's another exemption if the start day is included in collective bargaining agreements, then that district is exempt from that rule until the expiration of that collective bargaining agreement. Yeah, I don't know why they felt necessary to write a rule at this, but I can understand some people being concerned about early starts that we have, and I know our treasurer and I had a conversation about that, just because it has impact on payroll and and monies that come in. Because if you start too soon, it it becomes an issue, but to think that it was necessary for the Senate to pass a law and, you know, the first thing they said in the news report was the impact on tourism and, you know, all of this other stuff, so it's like, okay, so you're going to really care about schools as a financial issue elsewhere. Not that that's unimportant, but you know, our government is, of course, all about limited government, local control, and so that's why they felt the need to pass a law. Are there any other questions or comments before I get myself into too much trouble?
Did not provide, make us do something and then not provide funding for it, so.
That's true.
I guess we can look at it that way.
That's one way to look at it, I guess, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Here, Mr. Tackett?
I'm trying to give you your board notes on my phone. I'm not texting or playing poker. That's okay. I was just texting. Everywhere I am.
All right. Treasurer's Consent Agenda. Let's see.
Okay, I have three items tonight. The first one is a list of fund transfers. So it's all of my grants from last fiscal year being transferred into the grants for this year. So any monies that I had received that I didn't spend, all the federal grants are allowed to be carried over into this year's grants. But we just have to do a formal transfer to do so. So that's all those transfers there. Seven point two is my appropriations for the year. On the June thirty-fourth, we set up temporary appropriations to get the year going. These are permanent appropriations, so now I know exactly how much my grant's going to be for this year, and so I went through and kind of find through the numbers. So these are the permanent appropriations. I can't amend them throughout the year, but most likely we shouldn't have to. So unless we're being, you know, we get a whole bunch of grants, we get more money, whatever it may be, then I can amend them, but hopefully they'll stay intact for the balance of the year. And then the third item are two donations that were presented to the district.
Are there any we need a motion to Mr. Powers?
Second.
Ms. Powers-Dolme. Are there any questions or comments?
I thought it was interesting that Hope Ridge was donating supplies and uniforms to us. Have they done that previously?
I think so. I think they do it once a year, every year, around the start of school.
Okay. I mean, I would think that there would be enough need within their own church that they wouldn't have anything to donate, but we're talking a two thousand dollar value. That's significant.
We do still send a letter, a thank you letter.
Yep. Marie, I just send them all out.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, if you call the roll, please.
Okay. Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Kristel?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
I'd make Treasurer's Non-Action Items.
Okay. Eight point one through eight point five are the reports for the month of August. So this is two months into the school year, but it's actually like just the way that everything kind of is timing. It's actually the end of my grants, it's the end of teacher contracts, so it's kind of like the end of adding that carried over. So now I'm totally into this year, hundred percent.
Okay. Are there anybody have any questions about any of the reports that were presented? Hearing none? It looks like we can move back to item four. Presentations. Who's lead?
This is getting ready. My name is Ruth Haynes. I'm the Director of English Language Development for Angel City Schools, and it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Adriana Cabrera, who I have known since she was a small child at State Street Elementary School. She's worked hard over several years and has not given up. And it is my pleasure, Adriana, to confer upon you your diploma as a graduate of Harvey High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah? I think it's a great thing we're doing. There's there are so many students that show their graduation after the school year. It's nice to be able to ask that. African students.
Absolutely.
If you're not the opportunity to celebrate.
Congratulations.
It's supposed to be. Yeah, well, I can start. I can give right back up.
I don't know whose idea it was, but it was from the Shabbos, someone else in the district.
Good. Thank you. It certainly is a sign of of the determination we like to see and and hope to see all of our students have. All right. Moving on to item nine, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. I guess since China's out of country, I'll read through them. Nine one is the disposals that are listed, some books on talk and listen translation systems and a laminator. Nine point two is an MOU for the Heritage SRO that's been signed and has moved through. Nine point three is payments in lieu of transportation. Payments for students attending nonpublic schools that are outside of our district transportation range. Nine point four is well-minted services agreement. Nine point five is for the Heritage Out of State Field Trips. Nine point six is for the Heritage Frank Kitchen Agreement. Nine point seven, Lake Erie College Student Work Agreement. Nine point eight, Auburn Career Center Affiliation Agreement. Nine point nine, the Signature Health Consulting Agreement. Nine point ten, Wood County Junior Center Agreement. Nine point eleven, the ESC CC Inter-District Service Contract. Nine point twelve is the action necessary for all of those, so if there's a motion for those. Some room. Ms. Kristel, Mr. Powers. Mr. Engelhardt, are you available to answer any questions on these items or the question? Does anyone have any questions on these items?
I would like to know a little bit more than what we have here about the Lake Erie College Student Work Agreement. So it's got something new because it said in there at the very beginning that it was Hazel Elementary Schools. Yeah, so is that is that true or is that an error?
It's it's well, they it's 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 a standard thing. We actually, this is something that we enter into annually. It allows us to be a site, a host site for like work-study students.
Okay.
And it just it's we haven't hosted any within that program. It just makes us an option, and we do. We we work with the college closely in a lot of different ways, and it just makes us available. Now, I think that they drafted that agreement as elementary because they, I believe that on their end, they anticipated that if they did place any work-study students, that it could be in the elementary school setting.
In the past, they've been placing students at Maple primarily, have they not?
Well, that, I mean, there's we, you know, we host a lot of student teachers. We host a lot of field experience students who work with Project War in particular, the student program at Maple. That's different from this.
Okay.
That was something originally pursued by the building administrator, wasn't it?
Project War or?
Well, I don't know necessarily about Project War, but just to keep I remember Mr. Seabird talking about really getting engaged and starting to pull the Lake Erie students into support, helps with some tutoring and stuff like that. I don't know if that was how it originated, but I know he was busy doing that and has continued on after that, but.
Well, we we're very, I think that we probably place one hundred percent of the requests that we get for
Oh, sure.
Student teaching and observations and field experiences and things like that, so.
Right. No, I mean, it's just another great way that we can mutually help each other.
Do they go through the background checks and?
We always send our big kids.
Pays for the background check as a Lake Erie student?
Well, it's it's in a typical volunteer situation, we pay for the background check. Now, it's it's a little different than, you know, whenever a student is coming in to do an experience. That's a little bit different, that they're kind of on their own to do that. But otherwise, for like a project or place, we do.
For those, I mean, I haven't had a background checked up for quite a while, but and I know they weren't overly expensive when the ones I've had, I don't know.
I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of forty bucks or something.
Okay, so it's going up a little bit.
It's about forty-eight hours, I think, to do.
It's all electronic. It's it's.
All right. Do we do it through the sheriff's office or?
Through the, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
And things are going well at Heritage with the SRO? Without hearing otherwise?
Well, we don't we don't have the local tech person in any place yet, but we've had.
I'm I'm it's by now that the posting has been placed, and they are accepting applications for the initial. And has the first That we've been doing the same thing we had last year with the side jobs.
Is it pretty much the same police unit each day?
Yeah. It's that. Which is why we wanted to move into having and that's sort of the same person.
I thought that was the whole purpose of that, is to have consistency and
Build a relationship.
Build a relationship, sorry. And you made it to the end of the week.
On their end, in terms of the process, they feel like they're on track. They get things built as they as they anticipate on their timeline, so it should be it should be getting wrapped up very quick.
Have they told us what their timeline is?
I'm not I'm not certain exactly what the timeline is.
All right. We have motions. We have second. Any other questions? Hearing none? If you call the roll, please.
Mr. Kristel?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Item ten for Superintendent's Non-Action Items. Ten point one, regular meeting agenda. I guess that's just general statement. Ten point two is the certification of standards. Ten point three is a discussion of the district culture and climate. Seems like this stuff has moved every month into different categories, but I thought that was under a different heading. Maybe Mr. or Dr. Engelhardt, if you could talk a little bit about the certification of standards?
Yeah, so that's the the text that is included under there. It has, this is another kind of standard procedural policy thing that needs to be done with regard to food service. It's just a an acknowledgement that we adopt the the standards that are expected for for regular food service operation that our school set.
And that would also include fundraising? I mean, does that prohibit students from selling candy? Which is a huge fundraiser?
It it that technically would be prohibited by the by other means operating.
But it doesn't look like it's included here.
But it does. It does acknowledge regulations for all snack foods sold by the Heritage USDA Smart Snacks at school.
A lot of those are put on by push organizations and PKS AAs. Those aren't direct school, but students may be selling them.
I think the key to this is that they can't sell it during school. So like, since we have free lunch and free breakfast, the kids can't be selling candy during lunch period.
Or during regular school day.
Right. So if they want to sell right, what's that?
There can't be anything to compete with the lunch or breakfast.
Any other questions? Anybody have any comments under the climate and culture discussion?
Just wondering how's the school year going? Yeah? Good, okay.
Well, we were all at the game Friday. I think the turnout was amazing. You know, the school spirit is obviously I don't know. I think it's better. It's better than it's been in years.
I saw people that I graduated with and there were a lot of people there.
Yeah.
The parking was
Challenging, to say the least. Good.
Anything else? All right. Item eleven, personnel loop. Item eleven point one, we have employment. So we serve classified staff in a correction. Item eleven point two is a resignation. Item eleven point three, change of assignment. Eleven point four, moving stipends. Eleven point five, a salary column change. Eleven point six, annual driver certificates for bus drivers. Item eleven point seven. I guess leaves, sorry. And eleven point eight is the tutor list. Eleven point nine, certified substitutes. And eleven ten, classified substitutes. Eleven eleven, supplemental people activities. And eleven twelve is the action. Consent for personnel items. We need a motion for those consent items? Some.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Ms. Remington?
Second. Sorry.
Are there any questions regarding any of these items?
I have a question about the moving stipend. What we what's the hell about?
It's part of our 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 agreement. Negotiated agreement. If a bar unit member is involuntarily transferred in such a way that would necessitate them needing to move the room, they they get a stipend for having to to move. If they voluntarily move, it doesn't they're involuntary. It's 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 relatively rare, but it's a permission by other contract.
Is that to kind of reimburse for costs incurred in the move, or is it for time that is done outside of normal?
It's really a time effort.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, the Senate, if you call the board, please.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers, Dolmey?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes. Item eleven thirteen, compensation for professional development for, Deb Remington? Do we have to do these individually?
Yes.
So Deb obviously needs some professional development.
Some, yes.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Mr. Costello, Ms. Powers, Dolmey. Um, and this is for travel and expenses for the OSBA conference. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, if you call the board, please.
Yes, I will be attending. No. Initially, I'm going on vacation with him, just to, yes, to Columbus. No, yes, I will be leaving on Sunday to go down and returning Tuesday after the day session is over, so I'll be there. Two full days.
All right. Senate, if you call the board?
Ms. Powers, Dolmey?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
I'm staying.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes. Item eleven fourteen, compensation for professional development for Steve Costello for when Ms. Remington calls the day before and says she'd rather go to Bahamas instead of Columbus. Ms. Powers, Dolmey?
Second.
Mr. Powers. Any questions about this? Hearing none, if you call the board, please.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Staying.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers, Dolmey?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes. All right, item twelve, professional visits. We have twelve point one, which are professional visits paid for from the general fund. Twelve point two, paid for from grant funds. Twelve point three is the action of, will someone make a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Are there any questions about these items? Hearing none, if you call the board, please.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers, Dolmey?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes. Item thirteen, hearing the public on non-agenda items. There's a second of our two opportunities, so, so. All right. Item fourteen, good things are happening. Are there some positive items or recognition that we'd like to bring to everyone's attention?
Hundred and forty band members in our marching band, the largest ever. Kudos to everyone who has encouraged our students to play musical instruments and to be involved in music programs.
And eighty-five fifth graders signed up this year.
Eighty-five graders.
Yes.
The arts are alive in Paintsville City Schools.
Get more instruments.
Well, that's been asked of me already, so.
That's a big problem and an expensive one.
Yes.
Wow.
Like beer, why aren't we encouraging quicker? A fire pit.
We could start an orchestra.
Pretty expensive, too. You think of...
Ready for strings?
I think that would be bad.
That would be bad for the life of our own orchestra.
We'd have to get some more music teachers. Ours are pretty busy already. All right, anything else? I think that would leave us with one last motion.
Some move.
You chair it.
Next.
Remington, Ms. Powers, Dolmey. Any last words? The Senate, if you call the board, please.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers, Dolmey?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes. All right, thanks, everybody. Sorry I've been playing a few minutes.